She can.
Hey, everybody.
Seamless. It looks like there's also here for topic four. She's in the room. But no one else in Zoom world.
Well, my understanding is this, the city's policy is wear a mask or not wear a mask. We don't know what that is, so I'm going to give that to you on this question. Seven o'clock. Let's see, the consensus we have. There's been a second.
Yeah, it is. I don't think we have topics for the board debate because these people are here for a specific item.
Are we going to do the minutes?
Yes, we will. I just wanted to. So, anybody have any comments on minutes from the last meeting?
Jennifer. Online, do you have your minutes?
Hi, Jennifer, you're muted.
I do.
Okay, page three, do you have a correction to the minutes? Under deliberations on page three, the last sentence of paragraph three.
Under deliberations?
Yeah. The last sentence, she wants to ensure that they are. That would not be in there?
Yes. Yes, I agree. She wants to ensure that they are not putting an undue burden on the adjacent property owners.
So I will make.
It's in a big public meeting. Have you applied a job?
I think it was a positive.
Good, good.
I was there and it was a positive meeting. Felt comfortable, like we were. All part of a big, bigger picture so that we don't. And other and of our various roles.
Feel like it was not just pleasant, but productive?
Yeah, to a degree. I think we could do it twice a year, but.
That was lasagna. That was.
Lasagna was good.
Sorry, I missed the lasagna.
Yeah, I hear you. It's right. Lasagna was.
You want to. Davis.
Then I'll make a comment.
Paul, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. I don't have these point meetings. Okay. Time for the, this is not a hearing, it's just a presentation.
Yes.
Center Sewer and Stormwater Master Plan Presentation.
Thanks for having us this evening. Appreciate it. I'm Peter Olson with Keller Associates and. I'm the manager for the storm and the sewer sanitary sewer master plans and.
I'm with Flock also with Keller Associates working on the master plan.
So we have a lot to cover. You can imagine we have two master plans that we're going to cover in a short period of time. Takes about a year to put together the plan, the plans and 20 minutes each to summarize that somehow. And stuff we love to do so we could talk about this for hours and have a lot of fun, but. Not the purpose of why we're here. We want to give you guys a good summary and let you know what we did. And answer any questions that you have. So please, you know, interrupt us if there's any questions along the way, but we are going to move really quickly. So. Let us know. So we're going to start with the storm water master plan first. And so the need and purpose of the storm water master plan, really, this is kind of a brief outline of what the master plan process was. First, we take all the data and we establish the criteria for the storm water master plan. And then we take that criteria. We develop a hydrologic and a hydraulic model. So there are two different computer models, really, the same model. And we try and mimic the, the city storm water system and replicate what it does. And we take that, that model and we. Evaluate it based on the existing system. So what's currently there in the system with the pipes and coves and everything and the detention basins? And then we. Evaluate what is, where are the deficiencies? Where is it flooding during what storm events? Then we add in the future connections, future pipelines, future development into the system and evaluate that as well and what. And then develop improvements that will need to address those deficiencies. And then we take that old, that list, a list of improvements that we are recommending for the, to address the existing and future deficiencies. And develop the capital improvement plan. So that's where the dollars and cents come into play. And, and then we document that all in the master plan. So what we have here in 20 slides or so, or so is just a brief overview of what that process is. So next one. Planning criteria is the first step in the process, as I mentioned, for the storm water system, we're trying to establish what storm event is our. That's our, that's our line in the sand. That's what we wanted to be able to handle or the system should be designed to handle. It defines the, the depth of the storm event, the time period, the other criteria has to do with the type of model that we use. There's, there's many types of models and equations that can be used to. Run the model. More importantly, on the right side, we established, you know, the 25 year storm event for retention. And then we also look at the two, five and 10 years. So those are lesser storm events. They're not as, they're not as. As bad as storms. And then the, the main collection system is, is designed or analyzed at the 25 year storm. So it's, it's should be handling what is designated as a 25 year storm events. That's one in 25 years by statistics handling that type of event. So the existing system, this is what you can use on your next, you know, your holiday get together trivia. You guys can quiz each other on, on this one in a sanitary system. Really, this is just a quick summary. You see the map of the system on the top left and some, some pictures from throughout your system, but. It's just quite a large system. When you think about 800 manholes, 10 detention ponds, and you got 45 miles of, of just pipeline. That doesn't, you know, count all the ditches, you know, the roadside ditches and all the other in this and the creeks and so on that convey the water where it needs to go. Excellent.
Then jumping into the model development, as Peter mentioned, there's a hydrologic, which is the rainfall and then there's runoff that comes off of the surface of your city. And so you develop drainage basins. If the rain is to fall, where would it drain to? What pipes would it go to and go into? And the hydraulic model is on the right, and that's a hydraulic grid line, which is an estimation of where the water elevation would be in your pipeline system. So that's the hydraulic side of it. And we look at both and the hydrologic, which is the runoff feeds the hydraulic. So we do an existing capacity evaluation and there's eight main drainage basins in the city that we larger basins we divided. And one of them does not have existing stormwater infrastructure, so the Fisher Basin down in the south. And so we'll go over the seven other basins. So the yellow basin here, we have the north trunk and then the middle trunk is the purple and downtown basin is the green. And so the blue lines are your modeled pipelines and the different colored dots show where you would have overflow or surcharging. Anticipated at different manholes. So the red manholes would be expected to flood at the two year event. So approximately one every two years. The orange is the 10 year, the yellow is flooding at the 25 and the purple is surcharging. At the 25, so our criteria was to allow surcharging within half a foot of the rim elevation. So if it's closer to the rim elevation than half a foot in the 25 year event, it would be this purple dot. And we do look at the 100 year storm event, just to know what is going on. The main concerns would be if you were worried about high kind of traffic areas or. That would cause kind of catastrophic flooding at that event. You might want to know about it, but we don't design typically to the 100 year.
Quick question. So the red dot you're saying. Out of the mantle?
Yes, yes, correct. Or, and some of these are catch basins as well. So around ground elevation is where that water would be. And so there are some deficiencies in all the basins. This is the, the green way. And you can see is the storm water system is a series of separate collection systems. And so they don't all feed together like your sanitary. So. Each of the pink triangles is an outfall somewhere into a waterway in your system. And here we have the, the Milton Creek and McNulty Creek Basin existing evaluations. And then in addition to hydraulic evaluations, we did look briefly at the GIS database and identified. GIS database where it shows the pipelines running under a building. And these are just on the list of recommended that as the city moves through maintenance and things, they verify if these are truly under structures. And if they are, we'd recommend moving them into right of way. So we looked at a couple of specific future developments. This is the riverfront development that the city's done a lot of planning and framework for. And so we're looking at running a main trunk line on the proposed road there. And sorry, north is kind of down into your right. So you weren't. And we would expect there to be water quality, water quality facilities. And that would be part of the developers plan and part of their development process. And so they will drain to some existing outfalls and some improved outfalls on the, the river. The next growth area here is the industrial business park. Again, looking at gravity truck lines to convey your storm water off of the property. One thing to note about this is that a decent portion on the river is actually in the 100 year flood line. And so that will be have to be potentially a consideration of where your high river water elevation is when you do your storm water.
It also affects your outfall. When you're down the road and design and where you're designing, where you're out on permitting requirements from the Army Corps and Oregon D S L so on.
So another aspect of the master plan is we reviewed the city design standards, municipal code and comprehensive plan with regards to stormwater infrastructure. And these are the highlights of that review and recommendations. The main one is that the city does not have clear triggers or requirements for water quality facilities. Which is not unusual. We see that with a lot of cities, but more and more water quality is an important aspect of storm water. So we're recommending the city look at that in the future and see about integrating that into the design standards and code. And the BMPs and LEDs are best managed practices and low impact developments and those go along with water quality standards.
As the city steps through the process of looking at the TMDL implementation plan, so it's from DEQ, it's a permitting process or pre permitting process. They're gonna, they're gonna want to see these, a lot of these recommendations that we have here are related to that, you know, taking those steps forward to having stormwater quality triggers and requirements. For development and redevelopment and any projects that are completed in St. Helens.
So is this water treated?
It's, it's treated in a stormwater sense, not a wastewater sense. It is different types of treatment, yes.
Everything flows to the river.
Correct, eventually, yep.
When you were talking about city adopting these codes more. To get to a point where the city can authorize stormwater treatment instead of EQ, is that the project that's called, it's like.
NPDS?
Not NPDS, but.
The 1200C.
No. I'm asking you, like, the city for battle stresses, they, they have their treatment plan so planned out ahead of time that. Not talking about taking us to that point.
The requirements that you would put on the development and new projects. I will, I will say that's for storm water quality, but for the hydraulic capacity, that's what the master plan is, is what you're talking about. Is for the hydraulic capacity, we're saying, hey, these are the pipes that you need. These are the improvements that you need to be able to handle it hydraulically. For stormwater quality, that's another level.
I don't know everything about it, so it's one of those.
So we looked at all of the deficiencies evaluated or defined in the evaluation. And we looked at some alternatives and developed the recommended improvement into capital improvement thing. So the little symbol is detention facilities. So looking at utilizing some park spaces and some natural ravine areas. Try to use those naturally as detention and reduce the loads on, on the pipelines. And then the lines are pipeline improvements. So the top three priorities are here by the Campbell Park Detention Pond, which is already in discussions within the city. And then improvements along Columbia Boulevard there and another small detention facility.
Stormwater. Creeks around here.
Yes, yes. No, McNulty and Milton are, are big contributors. They take a lot of the storm water that end up in the, and then eventually go to Columbia.
Call those creeks just part of the conveyance system or are they the creeks, the, the outfall?
Outfall.
And so the priority one improvements handle most of those red or orange dot areas and areas that the city and city's public work staff know or have seen flooding historically. So that's how, kind of how we prioritize between, there are three priorities within the capital improvement plan. So these are priority one. This is priority two and the, the riverfront infrastructure and the industrial business park infrastructure also in priority two for right now. And again, some pipelines and a couple of detention facilities within open spaces in the city. Then priority three is the last priority. And again, pipelines and a couple. There's any intention in this one. So pipeline upsizes to handle the larger storm events may show some flooding. And then we reviewed the current O N M activities and recommendations for the system. The ones here would be cleaning and CCTV inspecting every two years. So trying to do about half of the system every year. Cleaning catch basins and manholes every two years as well, similarly half the system. And then cleaning and inspecting pitches and inlets annually, sweeping roadways. Detention facility maintenance. And then a lot of the public works does do a good amount of in-house storm line replacement and repair, repair projects. And then construction inspection and permitting is also within the stormwater division. The engineering division helps. That and complying with the new TMDL implementation plan and reporting. And so looking at a couple of other annual cost considerations, we look at the typical lifespan of different. Facilities. So the top one there is just your line, storm lines around every 75 years. You would expect them to be end of youthful life. 50 years for catch basins and manholes. And so if you were to continually replace a 75th of pipelines and a 50th of the manholes. This is where your annual replacement budget would end up, around $900,000 annually. And we looked at the staffing evaluation and looking at those recommended staffing activities. We would recommend somewhere between four and a quarter and four and a half FTE to meet level of service goals. And currently you have budgeted around that amount of FTE. However, in talking to public work staff, there's a lot of non utility work that they also help with around the city. And so that is something to take into consideration of how much time they actually have to focus on utility work. And then considerations of engineering FTE as you implement some of these capital improvement projects. They will increase work for the engineering division. And then. Implementing regular inspection program annually. And the Mercury TMDL plan and annual report, which most of the Mercury TMDL requirements fall within those list of recommended O N M activities. So if you're doing those, there's, you will need. Most if not all, there's some public education pieces on that that would be separate.
Is your annual replacement cost, is that for system after it's all built out, stuff that's not built yet? You old in the news?
Um, there's not a lot of new pipeline that gets added. So this, I believe, is based on the existing pipeline numbers.
It, it's a snapshot from today.
Yeah.
And as things are added. What was that, sorry?
No, including Fisher Basin, it doesn't have any structure, so.
Correct.
So questions?
I have one that's related to our. Business park. And I see in the maps in the phases of development. And then our phase three, which aligns Milton Creek that there's labeled a potential regional stormwater facility. And so I, I'm sort of, what, what would that mean in terms of stormwater facility? Is that just again, that's just. It's, it's probably not in your report here.
Okay, sorry.
So it's not in your report. I guess if, if we're looking at it on your, on your map, it is where you have the. Apple. The yellow number 21 down in the southeast. Majority two. So that one, that one spot that goes on down to the red, I guess. Yeah, outfall there. So I mean, is a facility, is that, could, could a facility just refer to that, that, that's basically land where we direct the water to, to flow into the creek? Not necessarily construction of a, of a building. I guess it's the idea of facility that always.
Facilities are typically going to either detain water so that you reduce the amount of peak inflow into your river and or provide water quality. So again, providing slowing of water, reducing sediment and pollutants that are getting. Typically, when you have like a regional facility, it's the stream water from a region and then provides detention and or water quality.
And, and, okay. Yeah, that, that, that label is on another document.
Yes. Just want to make sure, Jennifer, any questions from you?
No, I'm good. Okay, great.
I've got a question on new development such as. Be required to put a retention system in.
All, all new development will need to address and. Yes, the short answer is yes. And that's just a standard, a design standard and code that it needs to be implemented if it's not already there. I can't. If it's, I think the hydraulic, the hydraulic detention is there, but the triggers for the water quality are not.
I didn't know if it's state wide or not, but I guess you can answer that.
And they, those are in your city design standards. So, yeah, you must, you cannot increase your peak flows off of your property with increased impervious areas to development. There's stormwater questions before we jump wastewater?
So moving on to the wastewater master plan. So the need and purpose, you'll notice it's really similar, other than the color, we tried to switch it up and. Trick you, but really the, the need and purpose, you know, at the beginning, the, the criteria is different in that we're working with the sanitary. It is a little more defined, although we have the inflow and infiltration into a sanitary sewer system that. Is, is typically the, the wildcard of defining their criteria. But we still develop a hydraulic computer model. We just don't have the hydrology to, to, to deal with there necessarily. And then we summarize existing deficiencies, make a recommended improvements for, to address those existing and future deficiencies. Develop the capital improvement plan, come up with the cost estimates of what that's going to look like and, and pull it all together in the master plan that, that is the end result. So the planning criteria, actually DEQ defines or recommends. Nice guidelines on how to define the, the flow criteria. The flow criteria is important. And that's how you, that's how you design your pipelines. And then when you look at your treatment plant. It's how you evaluate and define different components of the treatment plant as far as your headworks, your treatment and so on and so forth. All these symbols or all these acronyms we defined at the bottom. I'm not going to go through all those. The, the key ones that we're looking at here, especially for the purpose of this collection system master plan is the PIFI's peak instantaneous flow. That's the, the flow criteria that your collection system is required to convey according to DEQ. So what we've done is we've looked at the population and projected that out after defining those flows. And then based on the, the per capita flow, predict that out for the 20 year growth. The 20 year planning period. And it gets us to the, the flow of the 28.16 that we're looking at for the future scenario for the wastewater system that it needs to handle.
Got a question.
Yes.
So a few years ago, we got a DQ grant. Rely on my property. And also to take, take that study or that what was hard to be done.
Yeah, we, we were aware of that one and, and have considered that as much, as much as we needed to, but then you're almost kind of wanting to turn, turn a little, you know, put your blinder on and say, what does it look like today? And what does that look like? But we're aware of that and the work that was done and the improvements that were made to lower the influence infiltration.
Yeah, the ignore because a lot of work is.
Definitely, definitely. So, and that kind of brings us, that's a good segue into the inflow and infiltration. For any wastewater collection system, inflow and infiltration is, is. Your number one enemy. You're, you're, you're going to deal with it no matter what. There's, there's no foolproof way to eliminate it 100%. A lot of, maybe some pressure sewer systems, but even then there's, it's not 100%. The one that's not on this graphic here is some pumps. So that is an issue here in St. Helens. It's historically been, been a concern. We did address that with, and you'll see in some later figures, some recommendations associated with that. But these are all the possible ways that that inflow, so the direct influence from the rain and then the groundwater, so the infiltration from the groundwater can get into your system. The city, the St. Helens collection system definitely has influence from, from influence infiltration. There was a benefit from the projects that, that were completed, but then it's, it's a, it's something that needs to be addressed in continuation. So. Moving on to, again, this is your trivia numbers that you can, you can work on at the holiday party. 60 miles of gravity, a, a pipeline, nine pump stations, you know. Uh, sixty miles of gravity, uh, uh, pipeline, nine pump stations, you know, we're gonna clean outs. I mean, there's a lot. It's a fairly large system, a lot, a lot going on, a lot to maintain, uh, and take care of.
System combination storm.
It is not.
Oh.
It's separate. Yep, yeah. I mean, Portland, you mentioned Portland earlier, that historically, they're getting away from that obviously now.
Then jumping to the model development here, we, something called R D I I, which is rainfall derived, uh, influence infiltration is the way to characterize that I N I in your system. Um, the method we use is, it's called R T K and it uses, um, a couple of unit hydrographs to calibrate. And so we do flow monitoring in your system and we use the actual data that we get from those rainfall events that are captured to help us calibrate the model throughout the, um, I think we had six flow monitoring basins in this. So the B S F would be your base sewer flows, and so that would be sewer from how residential, commercial, industrial. The R D I I is the rainfall influence on top of that. And the white on the bottom is groundwater influence, which would be, it's more constant source. Um, when your pipes are saturated in groundwater, um, and those all, those pieces all fluctuate depending on your system and your water tables and things like that. Um, and so as Peter mentioned, your R D I I on your precipitation events are pretty high. This is a generic figure, but you're significantly higher than your base flows with your, your rainfall influence. So when we calibrate the model, we then run the five-year storm event, um, and we evaluate the system capacity. And so red and orange pipelines are past the design cleaning criteria capacity. Um, and red are.
I would mention add that in sanitary, we're not looking to surcharge the pipe. In storm, that's okay if the wa- the level and the, you know, the manhole gets above the top of the pipe. It's not as much of a concern. Sanitary, and again, that's another criteria that is established at the beginning of the, the master plan. There are some sanitary systems that do, and their criteria allow for that, just because there's so much work to be done. They just, they can't tackle that level of, of, of improvement. Uh, for this one, it's, it's surcharging is, is, is red. Not, not overflow.
Correct. And the red dots would show potential locations of overflow. So that would be where water would come out of the top of your manhole.
Russ, for your purposes, there's a lot of red on there.
He's colorblind. Right, thank you. Yes, so. You have red pipelines and dots of your basin truck lines, um, is what this existing capacity evaluation shows. And so we did look, oh, uh, high level evaluation of I N I, um, priority locations. And so these are identifying locations where it's highly suspected that there's high I N I influ- influence. And so as the city starts to try to mitigate I N I, these are the places we would recommend looking first. Um, and one of the big places is kind of this middle, it's on the, um, sorry, it's over to the left of that. Yeah, that one, thank you.
Yeah.
And this is where there are suspected to be probably a good number of sump pumps that are incorrectly connected to the sewer system. The way that it surcharges very quickly during rain events, um, suggests that that's where, that was where you would focus your sump pump kind of identification and mitigation efforts first.
Be connected to the storm.
Is improperly, it's not supposed to be. So it can be illegally or improperly a lot of times, um.
Old construction.
It's connected to the sanitary.
Yeah.
You can connect it to storm. His question was about storm.
It, it should be connected to the storm. It should not be connected to the sanitary system.
Some of them, yes, are believed to be, and that's where.
Yeah, sorry about that.
We'd like, yes, identifying those would help a lot with the I N I. Um, and then we looked quickly at inadequate slopes. So there's recommended minimum slopes in the prime standards. Um, this figure identifies where those pipes are below the middle of slopes. Sometimes it means that there can be additional bill of solids or more likely to clog and things. Um, and then we also again identified uh, pipelines that under the G I S show they're under structures, um, so the city can take a look at them and see if they are or not. So we did a pump station risk of failure analysis. And so risk of failure analysis looks at both the likelihood of failure as well as the consequence of failure. Um, and so this is increasing risk of failure analysis towards the red. Um, and this shows that your pump stations are actually in a pretty good spot. Uh, pump station one is the highest risk, uh, of failure. And so it helps prioritize pump station improvements. Um, as well as you would like to be operating not so high in the red, obviously, um, because that means that you're likely to have a failure and the failure would have large implications to your community, so. Then here we've identified with city staff, the anticipated twenty-year growth areas. Um, and this includes residential, some commercial, and then all of the gray areas in the south are industrial growth areas anticipated within the twenty-year twenty-year period. And so these loads were then added into the hydraulic model. Um, some additional trunk lines were put in the model as well, and then the twenty-year, uh, system was evaluated.
Interesting.
Think around it for a little bit.
Because a lot of this was crystal ball.
Yeah, I'm imagining Jacob Peppin putting on this.
And this coincides with your, the way we get at this lot is, um, the P S U projected growth population within twenty years. We back that into a approximate E D Us and then look at where the E D Us are expected to sort of spatially be distributed in your system. And then the industrials on top of that.
The user equivalent to all units. The way of measuring.
So.
Is there a question we can?
Well, we, we're looking, we're thinking about a situation which, um, every year, there's a sanitary sewer goes to this one area where we both live. And this, the drainage, there's no place for water to go in this one area.
There is a manhole.
And there's a, but there's a manhole, but. I, yeah, Sue, asked if we could, you know, open it up and let the water in because it's flooding people's houses. Obviously a storm into the sewer and that's a known, so.
Yeah, but I was told when it opens up because I didn't have them come and open it here. And it floods down into the trailer park. So it's not hooked up to something.
Oh, into one of the ones by the marina?
Yeah. When they lift the manhole and let the water out, because it's going into these people's foundation and coming up to theirs, well, it's gone beyond their sight.
That's between first and second.
Does it still do that?
I mean.
Does it still do that? I mean, have you seen?
It's been doing it for years and there's been no correction, but I've had public works come out and they don't like doing it, but. They'll lift the lid and then it floods out the trailers. Which is gravity bend. Down below, so. I mean, it's not hooked up.
So that's the situation. Well, I'll, I'll have to trust that, you know, the, uh, Sharon and her, or the public works who are looking at that. And if there's some, if there's something they need us to look at.
Is it public work? Because I'll go talk to public work. I've talked to Sue.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's up to them. I mean, operational wise, but if there's something that there or if we can look at it.
Did you want me to comment on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, it, it, it is a sanitary manhole. It's one that we lined, that we lined the pipeline and we have the manhole a long time ago. Um, I only know of one incident where they pulled the manhole lid because the water was getting into, um, up above the foundation level of the home down there on, um, North First Street. And it did, uh, overflow the downstream system and flood out another location in the trailer park down by the marina.
Well, Neil is for me every year. He's gone, I can tell you that.
Well, if he did that, that was, uh, not exactly appropriate. But.
I guess some people citing and they've been asking about it year after year after year.
Well, we've looked at trying to put a storm system there, but it's, that lot is so low that we can't get a system in there that will flow the water away from that particular, it's, you know, one lot and to.
Sanitary. I mean, there's a storm nearby. I think I remember us talking about that and then advising them maybe to pump to the storm.
It's not their lot. It belongs to someone else.
Right. It does.
I ran into that one after I bought it. But what I, I, I don't think I talked to you, Sue, but, um, I thought maybe what could be done is, is a, like a two-inch gooseneck or something on that, when the water got above a certain level, it would affect houses. It would let in just a minimal amount of storm into the sanitary, because that seems like.
We can't do that ourselves because that is a violation of our municipal code that, and so we can't break our own laws. It's like, would be like saying, well, uh, you know, I wanna drive eighty miles an hour down Columbia Boulevard. It's against the law. It's.
Drive eighty miles.
You have to talk to our police chief.
To him on something too.
Yeah, let's, we'll, we'll move on.
It, it's, it's a problem area that we are, have been aware of for a long time though.
Is it public work? Well, this has been going on, yeah, public work, so.
Well, it depends what it is you're asking. If you're asking for someone to go and pull the manhole and let the water go into the sanitary sewer, that's, yeah, that's. Well, to fix it, that's, that would be engineering. It's, it's our department that would have to look into some sort of a solution, which we have before.
Right, continue on.
So looking again at the two larger, um, city-owned properties for truck line development. Um, this is the riverfront development and, um, for, to serve this area, we would be looking at a pump station. Um, and we're looking at, so blue is the existing pump station one in the downtown area. And the plan would be to move that to the yellow dot over to the left. Um, and all of the gravity that goes to the existing pump station, as well as this new infrastructure, would drain to the new pump station and would be pumped to the, uh, the Truman Plant Headworks up to above it on the figure. So that would be the main sewer truck line that would serve this area. And then looking at the industrial business park. This property is also anticipated to need a pump station to serve the properties. Um, it is lower than the existing trunk line up on Castor Road and south of Old Portland Road. So these pipes shown here are the trunk lines that would gravity to the green square to be the pump station. It's the, kind of the lowest point on the properties. Um, and that would be pumped with that black line up to the Castor Road Truck Line. And this improvement is recommended to, up at the top, you can see there's, um, a red segment. Thank you. Um, and those are recommended to be increased in size when this development is fully developed because the pump station would, um, downstream cause capacity limitations on that, that red section. That's the industrial business park. And this is the twenty-year capacity evaluation, so it has all of those twenty-year growth areas loaded in. Um, most of the problem areas persist and or get worse. Um, the other area that was right on the cusp, but not an issue in the existing, but is in the twenty-year, is that southern truck line around that square six, um, where we just talked about the industrial business park. And that truck line takes a lot of load from some residential areas and all of the industrial areas that are anticipated to grow. And so those are the main loads that are getting added and causing surcharging on that. Then similar to the stormwater master plan, we reviewed the city design standards, municipal code, and for sewer-related, um, requirements. Um, and there's not a whole lot of major recommendations for the design standards of the city code right now. A couple of them would just be matching references with the O dot, um, references or American Public Works Association standards. Um, some clarifications on pipeline sizing, slope and cover, um, and manhole design requirements, that kind of thing. And then again, we have the capital improvement plan. It is developed again into three priorities. Um, so this is the first priority. And so we're looking at, uh, adding a trunk line that goes along kind of Walton Street and diverts flow away from the Fifth Street tun- tunnel and trunk line, that purple line. And so that line would go to the south and then go to the Truman Plant. Um, and then subsequent improvements would include upsizing or could include upsizing the, uh, Fifth Street, from climb to that purple line and funnel. And these are also all dependent on how effective the annual I N I reduction program is. So any and all annual I N I reduction can reduce, delay, or eliminate the need for these capital improvement plans. So if you can reduce your peak flows, you don't need as much capacity and then you wouldn't necessarily need all of the pipeline. Um, and so you typically look at upsizing downstream pipelines before upstream, so that if you up, so you don't flood out your downstream when you do the upstream improvements. Um, one of the reasons this is ordered the way that it is, is that the first project will reduce flows to the second project on Fifth Street. And so the idea would be to complete the first project, do some additional monitoring, see what your I N I reduction has done, as well as that first project, and then evaluate the expense of the improvements required on that Fifth Street. Priority two, again, we have the riverfront and the industrial business park, uh, infrastructure is included here. There is, all of the little squares are pump station improvements. So there's minor improvements, safety improvements on a number of the pump stations. Um, and then pump station eleven, which is this two-point-two, is, um, an upsize based on future growth and relocation, so future areas trade into it. And the final priority here is priority three, capital improvements. Um, and this is a lot of the other sort of main trunk lines. Um, and pump station seven does get upsized and that is a lot of, again, that's industrial growth as well as some residential growth to the southwest of town area. Annual O N M recommendations, uh, for the collection system, we recommend cleaning the system every three years, so aiming to clean about a third of it every year. And then we recommend inspecting it every six years, so looking at inspecting a sixth of the system annually. Um, and then you're coordinating manhole inspections with your cleaning of the pipelines and your inspections of the pipelines. And then prioritizing I N I project and some efforts as part of the annual I N I reduction and annual replacement program. reduction and annual replacement program. Here we summarize other annual cost considerations. There's five hundred thousand dollars annually recommended in the CIP. And this is partially to start to work towards a replacement, annual replacement budget, as well as to implement INI mitigation programs throughout the years. And your annual replacement budget is over to the left, that's seven hundred and ninety thousand. Again, based on useful, typical lives of pipes and manholes and cleanouts. And staffing valuation, similarly, looking at three and a half to four FTE to meet your O and M levels of service goals and excuse me, the current budgeted FTE is right around there. And then again, the non-utility work takes time away from their, the public works operations ability to provide their utility maintenance. And again, additional engineering FTE should be considered for GIS work that's get, would be increased with some of your INI mitigation programs. As well as when, if you implement some CIP projects, that increases the workload of the engineering division. And then similarly, looking to schedule regular inspections of your pipelines. We're told there's been a addition this year, so we'll have to get an updated photo.
Oh, we got it.
So, questions or comments on the sanitary sewer?
precipitation during wet weather, that's, I never realized that. It has such an impact on the sanitary. That's just coming through the.
Yeah, it's like that figure we showed is coming, coming through the manhole, is coming through connections, is coming through groundwater, you know, the slower, more slower infiltration, it's from a lot of places.
It also comes from private laterals and that's something that cities often battle since they don't always have jurisdiction over it. But you, looking at lateral connections, and so there's a lot of feet of lateral pipeline when you add it up.
From the house to the main is, is, that's your bigger impact.
Yeah, when, when we first started the INI study many years ago, all of the testing that was done showed that half of the inflow and infiltration that we were getting into the sanitary system came from private laterals. So when we are doing our own projects to help reduce the INI into our system, we try to look at the laterals in those same locations as well. Because even if we fix our stuff, it's not going to fix the whole problem.
Western Oregon across the board has high INI. Community systems that don't. Not an anomaly.
It's higher here also because of a rock.
Yeah.
It doesn't infiltrate into the soil, so it just goes right to find a crack or anything. That's nothing.
Remember a lot, about ten years ago, I had to replace my lateral and then at the same time, the city sealed I guess the main or whatever that goes along the back of our property line. And I'm assuming that was the reason why my crawl space hadn't flooded until, and then that, a lot of the stuff that may have been seeping into the sewer main or whatever. Is now, so I don't have a sump pump, but I do have a pump that I'm pumping stuff out into the street at least right now to take care of it. So anyway. But, yeah, there's a, lots of work that's happening.
When we started ceiling.
Those are fun calls for you, Karen.
So.
Are you going to talk about next steps at all?
We can't.
So really, the next steps, I mean, it's going with the city council and presented them, it was November third, I want to say the third.
Meeting in November, it'll work, work session.
So that's, and presented them and then, and, and answered their questions and then it all goes forward adoption by the city council.
So this isn't being adopted into the comprehensive plan, so that's why this is in a land use hearing with all that stuff. But we just wanted to make sure that you were aware of this as a courtesy and for your education. And, you know, some of this, some of this may apply in future decisions we have to make.
And I think this kind of thing isn't just so much out of courtesy, as I'm looking at the powers and duties of the planning commission and I wanted to talk about this later. And it certainly falls within the realm of what planning condition So I, I think this kind of thing is, is more than courtesy. It's, it's essential. And essential that the planning commission is getting this. And, and not only just, I think, not just for informational purposes, but to be able to provide recommendations and input to the council.
We've run into some of these issues you pointed out, the problem areas, one, the taxation on thermal we're pulling the source system, really couldn't handle there or whatever it needed and so it was kind of a bright training problem area in their area, so we run into that here.
Capacity is often dealt with in any stations.
Seven, eight, six, the public hearing is now open. The quasi-judicial land use hearing, subject of this hearing is required for a variance. The subject property, the debt buyer, the tenant, forty-three oh five, amount four nine one W H D D. The applicant is John.
Yes.
The owner is the city of St. Helens. The quasi-judicial proceedings require the observance of cert procedural requirements. The legal wants to cover some preliminary matters for expert in content.
I do. Jennifer. So the city of St. Helens has hired the Jane Garcia team, which I'm a co-owner of, to sell the property and Mr. McGee is also our client, so.
Previous potential buyer, the asked me to look at the property as state position.
Familiar with the property, that's, it's funky.
Jennifer, do you feel like your opinion is still neutral in this matter?
Probably not. I probably should step out of it.
Okay, so then, because you're on Zoom, that makes it easy.
Just mute yourself.
And don't make funny facial expressions that may motivate the commission to think differently.
All right, so I, I, can I step in as making testimony? In favor of?
That may be a little. It's probably not a controversial issue, so it's probably not a big deal, but it's a little weird.
That's fine. I just.
Is Jane there?
She's upstairs.
She have done the testimony?
I don't know if she's comfortable with that. I'll text her and see if she'll come down.
All right. Do you want the audience subjected to the ability of a commissioner to make a fair decision? Only the order of proceedings will be as follows. Required statements, staff report, applicant's presentation. Those in favor of the applicant, neutral testimony, those opposed, rebuttal by applicant. Final questions, closing of the record deliberations, and we might not do all those, it's just you here. The following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to the city code ORS one nine seven point seven six three five. The following is a list of the applicable substantive criteria for this decision. City of St. Helens Municipal Code seventeen point one zero eight point zero five one. All testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantive criteria as described or other criteria that plans such as comprehensive plan or land use regulations such as those as that found in the development code, which is a per se basis applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue, including constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval in this hearing in person or in writing. Failure to raise an issue of, by statement of support, evidence sufficient to afford the reviewing authority and opportunity to respond to the issue includes appeal to Luba, latest form of appeals on that issue of action will damage the circuit court.
Yes, I think, Mr. Chairman. So this is a lot, this is a city surplus lot. The city council kind of overviewed, took an overview of their properties and say, well, what do we not need anymore? And the city does have, you know, some lots that are encumbered by utilities like this. And of course, the city's not the applicant, it's the prospective purchaser. We wanted to give you that background. Habitat Humanity was looking at it for a while and that's why we have some improved plans that show the utility locations a little more accurately than some of our own data, because they worked with Public Works for field locations and stuff. But we're talking about variance and in a variance, we need to have unusual circumstances unique to the property and that they're not asking for the world, that it's reasonable. And in this case, I mean, you just look at where the, the storm sewer cuts through almost the center and then you have the sanitary sewer on the south side. You definitely have more encumbrance than normal. Which is unique to the property because properties usually don't have that many utilities, public utilities going through them that require at least fifteen-foot wide movements on center, which are kind of depicted there. That really impacts the building footprint. So there's really no question that a variance should apply to this, at least in staff thinking of it. You can of course disagree. And what the applicant is requesting is to reduce that front yard or the front setback. And on this particular diagram, you can see that, that twenty-foot mark there identified in the dash line. And there's, there's a few different ways to handle this one. He wants to be able to get to that front property line. And in this home concept shown here, the normal front of the house is about six feet back from the front and then you have the porches and stuff within that six-foot area. So there, there's two ways to look at it. If you review this and go, yeah, you know what, this is a variance that's justified. You could, one path that you have would be just to allow a zero-foot front setback. That means go up to the front property line with whatever. The beauty of that is that it's simple. But perhaps you're thinking, well, but can you, can a reasonable building footprint still be achieved while retaining some front setback? And so that's when we get into the options of, okay, well, let's say you grant the six-foot normal front setback instead of twenty. And then if you recall, in these, this last batch of code amendments that we talked over and over and over and over again, and you got tired of us talking about it. But hopefully that helped you remember some of the details. And one of the things that we put in there was, if you recall, there's a front porch encroachment into the setback that's allowed. And we increased that from three feet to four feet. And one of the things John is asking is for that front setback encroachment to go all the way to the front, which would be six feet instead of the normal four. If you were to stick with the normal four feet and allow it to go with a two feet, then you're, you're taking the, no closer than three-foot rule and narrowing that down to two. And I, I, I think probably as the planning commission's thinking about this, because that gets kind of complicated. If, if you're like, well, this is, this is not, just grant the zero front setback, then that's, that's easy. If you think they should keep it at six and we can talk about the front porch, then that's a discussion that we can have. So that's kind of the proposal in a nutshell and some of the different ways you can approve it. And unless you have any questions for me, that's what I have to say as staff.
Are there, are there sidewalks?
Oh, yeah, let's talk about the street. There, there are, and there are some photos on the front page. And, and the one thing that this doesn't show too well, so, you know, this is our classic. You know, so there's, here's a couple photographs of the lot. So no, no sidewalks. Just the, the shoulder right to, to grass. And it's in a part of town where we have our classic eighty-foot wide right-of-way. And, you know, we don't have eighty-foot wide roads. And in this case, the physical road is actually skewed away from the house. So when you go out there, you think the front yard is huge, but a lot of that is public right-of-way. And so the, even if you had a zero-foot front setback, there would still be a substantial separation from the actual, actual physical road.
Maybe like twenty feet, right? Well, fifteen?
Um, something like that.
Twenty feet from the property line to the pavement. It's huge.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's really skewed. And I remember working on this, thinking I should put a diagram in there and obviously I did it.
I, I think let's wait.
Okay, all right.
You might have measurements.
So anyways, yeah, that's the street.
How if you grant six-foot setback, how is that affected? If sidewalks and curbs eventually wind up coming down that street?
Yeah, no, that, that's a great question. And a lot of times in the old part of town, when, when streets are built out, I mean, ideally, the best practice is to go from the center, but if it's already skewed, it's possible that the street would be built more towards the skew. However, on the other hand, the, it would be to a local collector's or local collector, a local street standard. And the local standard is based on a fifty-foot right-of-way. So even if it was centered, you would have at least fifteen feet from the back end to the sidewalk to the property line.
Now, those other three houses that are shown.
Strain that out then with the other properties? As far as like curbs and stuff?
Strain it out.
Well, it would three, three lots down.
There's room there, children, about fifteen feet in front of them at least. Because of the street.
The city, I mean.
There's room.
It's public right-of-way.
Grant that for sidewalks and and curbs?
It's been, it was granted over a hundred years ago for that.
There's room. Are only, are those other three lots that?
Just want to make sure that when you have your six-foot encroachment as far as approaching on the property line, that you're not going to later years down the road. That you're not going to later years down the road. End up having to put. Approvements. Curbs and sidewalks.
And half it.
Yeah.
Further into their progress.
No, I, I hear what you're saying, and so the right of way is already wider than it needs to be, so that wouldn't be an issue. Um, the purpose of setbacks is airlighting space between buildings and also to support a certain type of streetscape. And if you have a house kind of sticking closer to the street, you know, it would affect the streetscape a little bit. Um, but there are three lots. And this is an interesting block because it was a block, even though it was in existence for over a hundred years ago, it was built later. Um, in fact, if you look at aerial photos from the eighties, you don't see anything. On the property, I think a lot of it was built in the nineties if I, if I require, right, or, uh, require, right, remember, right? Um, some of you who've been here a long time may remember a contentious issue with Ray Bell. And, uh, Jimmy, can you go to this? So, uh, one of the things I'm gonna show you here, uh, is just, uh, some tax lot maps. And, um, when the applicant is circled there are three lots that kind of stick out. And those were developed, um, it was before my time. But there was wetlands. They did some right of way vacation, and so that's why they look weird on the map. Uh, the other thing that that did was result in homes that are closer to the, the street than other ones. And so there is already kind of a weird area as far as that distance from the street. You know, when you're kind of thinking about the street pattern. Uh, so the block is funky in addition to the lot itself being funky.
Are those on zero setback, the other houses, those three?
I think they're pretty close, yeah, because when, when you're dealing with significant wetland rules, um. There's, uh, s- some allowances to play with the setback requirements.
So they've all got about fifteen feet.
So, you were talking about sometime in the future, it's ever extended. We're talking about master planning the waste property. If it was extended, it would continue into that property. Does that property? Master plan to have residences, residents out there, is only industrial, so it won't necessarily have grid street patterns into that.
No, that's, that's, that's all slated for the parcelization, right, for.
All zone heavy industrial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You would likely have the, the residential street pattern grid continuing into that. So, like, it's not real high, that, that would be.
There, there's a couple of those streets that may provide a secondary entrance to the mill property. And, um. Ten?
Right.
A- and it's not this one. In fact, there's wetlands to the south of it, which kind of makes that impractical.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Personal. Already vacated?
No.
So?
It's the one highlighted in yellow.
This one rest that we're looking at tonight, this one.
Oh, okay.
Is it all the one?
Narrow a little bit.
Yeah, the, the, the point of showing those ones to the south have said, there's already some mutations of the block. So if, if, if you're concerned about the sanity, uh, maintaining that twenty foot setback for the purposes of that block, well, sanity's already lost.
No.
Well, we could ask those other houses to move forward.
We could, I don't know if they're gonna obey though.
Just a thought. And then put the sidewalk.
But yeah, it, this should have no impacts on street improvements, really, it's, it's just that the feel of, of the block.
Yeah.
Questions for staff? Why don't you come up and tell us what you know, you can speak.
Well, I wanted to apologize for interrupting, I didn't really know how this whole thing worked.
Alright.
And I'm glad that you guys.
There's nobody here but you, so.
Yeah, when there's a bunch of attorneys in the room, then we have to meet.
Christina, Shermy, you guys are all really nice. How nervous I was. And I appreciate you guys putting this all on the slides, so. Um, and to take, pretty much build it out, um, I'm just trying to, trying to build a house on a funky lot. That, uh, and, and I, and the last people, sewer easements are very important. So we need to keep that in there.
One thing that, uh, that, we've covered, uh, humanity study with, uh, wetland. An offsite wetland determination was done by Department of City Lands to determine if there wasn't any wetlands on the lot. So, yeah, local wetland inventory shows wetlands at the back, in the back portion of it. There's no longer suggests.
I probably gave him a copy of that.
Did you explain he has to cut the corner off his closet?
That's his, he put the house on there, I didn't cut it for him.
It took me a long time to figure that out, now, the ironic thing is they're gonna charge me more to make my house smaller. By chopping that off, they're gonna charge me more money.
Are you really gonna have to do that?
Uh, that's how I could get it to fit.
I would candeliver it over the edge.
What's that?
I'd candeliver it over the edge.
It's actually a huge walk-in closet, it's, it's very.
I see that, but just square it up and make it cheaper, I'd candeliver it.
Oh, you were saying, oh, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, keep the foundation on the other side of the line, but.
Yeah, we, we, aerial encroachments over easements are a problem too. Sure, well, I, I, I like the creative thinking.
Yeah, my, my point is that I'm. Gonna try really hard to get it to fit, to comply with all the rules and regulations. Uh, if you guys give me this variance, the next step I'm gonna do is I've already talked to, uh, Laura Columbia. I'm gonna have the lot engineered, just to make sure that it's not me out there with stakes and, and a tape measure. It's, I need you're saying, look, this is how it's gonna fit in here, this is how it's gonna work.
You did a good job, Habitat Humanity's in this building house and they give up on it, so.
Great.
So your lateral will be short, right? It's just right there, yours, your sewer lateral.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right there.
So, um, one thing you were adding earlier was that the distance between would be the front of your porch to the actual paper. Would you measure out?
Fifty feet.
Yeah.
It's huge, you get out there and you think, wow, in a huge lot, and then you start staking it out, it's like, well. No, it's just lots of dirt between here and the street. So you can turn a buggy around, is what I've been.
Yep, that's the old eighty foot standard. Or some buggy.
I have a house on a, a street like that, and my property ends three feet from my front porch, but the pavement's not forty feet up there.
Yeah, well, once and that was explained to me as I drive around St. Helens, it makes sense that. There's the street and then all this line and then the houses and then these tiny backyards, but that's the way it is.
Um, the, the one thing. That you don't see on there is a garage, and we still require off-street.
Yes, about that.
Um, and in the conditions, I mean, it would, you know, he's not asking for a variance to off-street parking, but we do have a condition that just says those requirements still apply. Just for emphasis, and he has a lot of room. Um, cause you can park on top of easements, you just can't build buildings. And, um. And the, the greatest is too bad, I know John was kind of worried about it, uh, but the, the side slope on that sewer. It's not, you know, a, a car could still traverse it. Uh, so, but.
Own the whole lot, but they've got the variance through the middle.
Yeah.
When they come every week to mow their share.
Oh, that would be nice.
Yeah, they, they pay a little extra and they do good.
You need all the e- the extra FTE for the maintenance, so, for the presentation.
So could you, uh, put a driveway, put a driveway over the sanitary sewer on that south side? And put a garage at the back northeast corner?
Yes, in fact, that's something that we've kind of, we chatted about.
Yeah.
As, as the option, but he doesn't have to have a garage, it could just be a parking area back there.
You could, you could pave on top of it.
Yes, yep.
We're doing some planning for him. Let's just get the house there right now.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm planning on doing a garage back there and having a driveway. Uh, but I figured as far as getting this variance that, that doesn't really affect it. So I was just trying to figure out how, how to get the house.
Let's see if we can get the house.
Okay, you also for the applicant? Alright, thank, thank you.
Thank you all, you gave your time.
You can skip the testimony and support, cause he's already there. Neutral testimony, are there any oppositions? No rebuttal? So we're moving right along in this program here. Um, which have you five questions of staff or, or, or the applicant? You're, we're not with you now.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, uh, you can pay for deliberations, they'll, they'll make a decision.
So you're just done providing testimonial, yeah, you don't have to run away yet, yeah. You may want to know the.
I'm just figuring this whole thing out, I'm sorry.
And zoom in.
Hearing of freely questioned the commission and no further questions to staff, the fully record is closed. And return to the table for deliberations and oral discussion. Here's what we're talking about. You have to sit there. A few a little bit.
So if you look at the conditions, um, I kind of. Wrote the options out in red under condition two. And I can explain.
We're looking at zero, I mean, we're including the porch, right?
Yeah, so there's, the easy thing is just to say, well, zero, zero. Uh, so then the porch, the living space doesn't matter, that's, that would be the easiest thing to administer. Um, the question would be, well, is that granting too much? And you could say, well, alright, well, the six foot front yard for the main portion of the building. And then there's the, the porch encroachment question. Um, do you allow the entire six feet for the porch to encroach into? Um, do you allow the four feet, but reduce the no closer than three foot rule? Or do you say, well, we grant the front six, but everything else has to comply, which means you can only have a three foot, uh, porch encroachment? And you're looking at me like, that's a lot of details.
Well, even if he's on zero, then he puts his porch right on the line.
Well, so.
His house fifth.
Yeah, that's what this is saying. You allow zero, there's no porch discussion, it's over.
Yeah, cause this porch or living space, whatever, doesn't matter.
So he, so he'd have a choice.
Yes.
That's correct.
Put the house right up on the line, or he can put porch, a porch that fits, so he can have a closet that's squared off.
Yeah, the, the zero foot would be the maximum flexibility and is not out of whack with the request. It's just if you felt that that was too much, then we can discuss the setback and then how much of a porch allowance, uh, would be appropriate.
And those other three houses are on zero?
I think they're pretty close, yeah.
Like these lots?
Yeah.
That's, well, well, they moved their property line out, so they would, they're on zero, that's why.
They're, they're gonna look at this thing a lot further, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're saying that since the, the last we've got of the end zero on that size lot. Or is it, you're on zero on the normal size lot?
They're close to zero on the.
Smaller.
Altered lots that were altered via lot line adjustments and right of way vacations.
So they're, oh, yeah, maybe this house if we, if they're on lot line.
Cause they are. Yes, right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. They don't say zero, that's the point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they come up over that, for this tree.
Anything else we need if we go with zero?
If you go with zero, that makes the findings easy and, um. And the motion could be as recommended by staff, um, allowing a zero. Uh, zero feet front yard.
That is gonna be my motion and maybe there's more discussion, but.
Would you put the garage in there?
No, we're not doing it.
We're not even talking, don't need to talk about it.
Well, just let it get a house.
If you know, condition three says off-street parker, off-street parker requirements of the development code still apply, so he'll have to, he's, he still has to figure that out.
Can we add a motion, we've got a second? Um, oh. Oh. Which, what's your vote?
I.
Oh, these are confused.
Was that all eyes?
Yes, I.
And then, uh, motion for signature?
So moved.
Second for signature?
Okay, yeah.
And all, all due?
I.
Alright.
I.
So they just approved it?
Just approved it?
Yeah, there's, there's a little bit of formality, but, um, someone could appeal it, but that's unlikely, cause obviously there's still a lot here.
So the last vote was for me to, what am I signing?
You, you are signing the final decision?
Yeah, it's written after we voted.
Well, I'll get something in writing?
Yes, yep.
Architects said, make sure you get it.
That, that is essential, um, cause then that document writing will be your tool to help develop the lot.
Fantastic.
Your credit.
Yeah.
Thank you guys very much, I really appreciate it.
Proud of you working on that.
Yeah.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, the time is now eight twenty-five. And this public hearing is now over. It's a pleasure, judicial land use hearing, subject of the series is a refresh rate annexation. Subject properties identified in the county assessor's map as lot fifteen oh one on map four N one W state CB. The applicant is Michael Pearson, the owner of the estate. Those clauses judicial proceedings require the observance of certain procedural formalities, we will take the, if you want, to cover the matter. Remember the question was to start a party contact, comfort of interest or bias in this matter. You back on?
Yes.
Okay. Any topic of interest with this? Right, is anyone from the audience, nobody's here, affected the duty of procedure, make a fair decision? The order of proceedings are as follows, required statement staff report, application, neutral testimony, those opposed, rebuttal, final process, close the record, delivery of this decision. All these statements are required to make the comments for the hearing pursuant to city code and ORS one nine seven point seven six three five. Always a list of applicable substantive criteria for this decision. Uh, so the city of St. Helens municipal code seventeen point two eight point zero three zero annexation approval standards. City of St. Helens municipal code seventeen point zero eight point zero four zero. One A approval status for the zoning conference of map amendments. City of St. Helens municipal code seventeen point zero eight point zero six zero, whether or not the annexation will have a significant effect on a transportation, so. Transportation planning rule compliance. This analysis municipal code seventeen point one one two point zero three zero two. Decision prohibiting annexed properties in established or developing land shall be based as they are defined. Per city sub, city of St. Helens municipal code seventeen point one one two point zero two zero. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive criteria described. Other criteria that plans such as the comprehensive plan or land use regulations such as that found in the development code which the person believes applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue including constitutional or issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval in this hearing in person or writing or penalty. Issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the proving authority and opportunity to respond to the issue, procludes appeal to Luba, the latest form of appeals. On that issue, procludes an action for damages to the circuit court, is that right?
You know, I've been listening to an audio book all day. And I don't listen to it at just the normal speed, I have it spit up, so you're right with it.
Okay. So staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the quick script. Um, so we're, we're looking at an annexation, um, it's for a property that's got a home on it on the south division. So it's for orientation, you know, got Millard Road here, this is the giant, uh, city owned Millard Road property. Um, so that should be familiar to all of you, um. So it's this kind of oddly shaped property. Um I know we're kind of zoomed out on this map, but this is actually part of the one acre property, it's kind of the back triangular portion. There's a, there's kind of this ten-foot connection, right where I have my cursor, um that connects the two properties. And I looked into the history, because it's obviously a weird parcel, it used to be part of this church property that's just to the north. And in twenty fourteen, it was sold to the current owner. So that's kind of why it's weird, I don't know why they created that, but. So the, the property owner wants to connect to sewer, um sewer is in the Millard Road. Right away, just to the south of the property, and they want to connect because they want to develop this back half, the back undeveloped portion. We've already sort of started talking with him about how that will work, and he's acquired an access easement through the church property so that there's not this weird bottleneck of ten feet. Um but he needs to connect sewer, that's why we're here tonight. It, it obviously, the property itself butts Millard Road and Division Road. Both of those roads uh lack sufficient right-of-way for their standards, and they also lack uh frontage improvements, or at least frontage improvements to our standards. We would review that potential at the time of any future development of the lot, not at annexation. So basically, if he applies for developing this back half with the city, we could have the full gamut of um improvements on our plate uh at that time. So uh this property itself is um zoned with county R ten zoning, and it's surrounded by county R ten zoning. Except for this giant um mixed-use parcel that is city-owned. Um and sort of slated for redevelopment with the city. And then next to that, there's kind of this big property here that was annexed. I don't know, Jacob might remember the year that that was annexed in, um but that is zoned R seven, so I don't know.
It was after I was here and before you.
Yeah, there's some period, period of time, twenty ten to twenty thirteen, probably, yeah.
Somewhere, yeah.
Um, that's the zoning situation. Uh we, as with all annexations, we sent out notice, uh Columbia County Public Works said they didn't have any comments or concerns. So.
You're laying both of the pieces here right now, the one in front and the one in back?
It's one property.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
But it looks like it's four.
It's like it's four.
Well.
Oh, so here, let me zoom in.
Yeah, with the lines.
Let me zoom in.
See the lines?
So this, I'm gonna follow my cursor, this is one property.
Right.
That's the subject of tonight, just this piece.
Just a little.
Yeah.
Yeah, that little corner.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it's ten feet wide. It's funky.
With that tape measure, huh? Okay, got it.
When do we get to that property? From public right of ways? The back part?
Yeah, it's one, it's one property, so the, the real question is, how do you get from this to here? Yeah, so that's why I, I mentioned the, the property owner has secured an access easement through the church. Yeah, and it used to be one parcel, so they knew that, they knew the church, um because they sold it to them, so they.
Which one is the church on?
This one. Can you see my cursor?
No, oh yeah, I can.
Okay, just in the north.
Okay, got it.
Yep. So as with all annexations, we look at the comprehensive plan zoning of the property, and I actually have that. Make this, I thought I pulled it up.
Oh, is that church and property annexed in?
The church is not in the city.
It's not in the city?
No.
Well, there's a church on the other side that we talked about, that was something that we annexed, but the church on this side adjacent to this property is not.
The one next to the city.
Yeah, on the west side.
Oh, oh, yes, this one.
On the west side, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That one is, yeah.
So I have this pulled up, because both of our annexations are in this area, so I thought it might be helpful, but you can see the larger zoning context here. The property that we're looking at is, is, remember, right here. Um and then you can see that R seven property that I mentioned next to the Millard Road property. Um so this is the comprehensive plan designation, and that off-white yellow um stands for, I'm gonna have to pull it up. It's rural suburban. Here it is. Rural suburban unincorporated residential, and our code says upon annexation, you have two options for zoning, you have R ten or R seven. Um and staff recommends R seven because you're consistent with what we just annexed on the other side of the Millard Road property. I think R ten would be. It, it would be uh not a, not a great recommendation. Um so really, that's the only decision for tonight, is R ten, R seven, given past annexation of here. Um and our housing needs analysis, which you're all familiar with. Say you have a surplus of R ten property, it makes sense to do R seven. Um. There's not a whole lot else here, most of the, um, I guess it's worth noting, the property is connected to McNulty Water currently. There isn't, uh, we don't have water in this area, um but if we ever do bring water to this area. Um there is capacity, and there's also capacity to support additional development with our sewer. In Millard here, which is fitting, given our presentation earlier.
I saw a question about size. Uh and it was not part of this decision, but you're actually, actually gonna split up that old ten-foot connection. Make it two separate lots. Uh and had legal access to the church parking lot. What is, what were the sizes of those lots being, is that?
Well, it's one, yeah, it's one acre now, and it looks like about half.
Okay, so that would.
If you wanted a rough estimate.
Yeah, so R seven could be.
It would be well over.
Relancers on there, so.
R seven.
It would be more of a ten size, right?
Yeah, the size, yes, yep, yep.
Notwithstanding dimensional constraints.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a, yeah.
I'm trying to get picture, size-wise, so they.
Get an R five, so we can put R seven now to talk. We can get more housing in that.
Yeah, it was very.
Very interesting.
Yeah.
Now, the joint meeting was supposed to review all that. It's levelable. That's fine. That's fine.
Any, any discussion on this, rolling right along?
Yes, so that's, that's all I have, um there's obviously no testimony, so I think we can.
All right, can we skip?
Yeah.
Uh the record's not closed?
We want a motion for an annexation with an R seven.
There are no further questions to the commission, no further response to the staff, public records close as bad as we're gonna deal with the rest of the oral decision.
I am so impressed.
We can talk now.
Can you do that backwards?
Decision oral and.
Anyway, motion.
Very good, perhaps you could use, I pay, I don't like.
Anyway, motion for annexation of the R seven, right?
On favor?
Hi.
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 Okay.
It's Jennifer.
Did we have a, a approval for signature?
This, yeah, this will go to city council.
Yeah, what?
Yeah.
City fire approval, so at the next meeting. The city plan will bring back written finding for approval of signature at the next meeting.
It's, yes.
All right. Uh it could be appealed, no, it's still. Have to read that.
Council, if someone wants to appeal.
Okay, you guys ready?
Yeah.
Got my mask off. Time is now eight thirty-nine. Yeah, the public hearing is now, the judicial land use hearing, subject hearing, the great question. For annexation, subject properties identified in the county assessor's map is lot twenty-eight hundred on map. Four N one W eight C eight, oil, water, conservation district. The, oh yeah, conservation district owner is the same. Because clause judicial proceedings require the observance of certain procedural formalities, you will take a few moments to cover some blurry matters or party statements. Does any member of the commission wish to impart a contact, conflict of interest or bias in this matter? Seeing none, in the audience, there's nobody here, object to making of it. Uh generally, the order of proceedings will be as follows, you all know this, for, for fire and statement staff report applicant's presentation, those favor the application. Neutral testimony, those opposed, rebuttal by applicant, final questions. Those are the deliberations, decision, all these statements are required, may I ask for the hearing pursuant to the city code and O R S one nine seven point seven six three five. The following is a list of applicants to stand for a period of this decision. Uh S H M C seventeen point two nine, two eight point zero three zero annexation approval standards. Cities and hills municipal goes seventeen point zero eight point zero four zero one A approval status of the zone and comprehensive map amendments. Cities and hills municipal goes seventeen point zero eight point zero six zero, whether or not the annexation will have a significant effect on transportation facility. Transportation planning rule compliance, cities and hills municipal goes seventeen point one one two point zero three. Zero two, the decision for classifying annexed properties in established or developing areas should be based as they are defined per. Cities and hills municipal goes seventeen point one one two point zero two zero. Arguments and evidence must be directed towards the applicant's substantive criteria described or other criteria in the plan such as comprehensive plan or age regulations. Such as that found in the development code, which the person believes applies to the decision. Feeling to raise an issue, including constitutional issues relating to the proposed conditions for approval. In this hearing, in person or writing, our failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence such as before the proving authority and so-called opportunity to. Respond to this issue, precludes appeal to lieu of the land's worth of appeals, on that issue, precludes an action for damages and circuit court.
Thank you, I really feel for you, because I have to read the same script at council, so.
Okay, we have good standards, I don't know, no. Now go for it.
We have a, after four.
There's a better way.
Go for it.
Uh yeah, so we're in the same exact area here, so this is actually a different map, I know it looks identical. But you'll notice this file number, or maybe you didn't notice, but I'm pointing it out now, eight two eleven. So the last digit here, this means that they, this file was created in twenty eleven. Um so it's an old, old um annexation that we just sat on the consent form until it became contiguous with city limits. As we know, you can't annex unless you're abutting city limits. So with the approval of uh the one that we just looked at, this property will be contiguous by the Division Road roadway. Um so obviously, you're, you know, annex roadways in, so, so this is a budding city limits. Um so this is the location today of um the Columbia Soil and Water Conservation District building. And they filed a consent to annex back in May of twenty eleven because they wanted to connect to city sewer and build uh or, or, and improve the facility. Um so they did connect, connect to city sewer, um but the annexation was on hold. And um the, so we know it's um the location of Columbia Soil and Water. We talked about these roadways lacking uh frontage improvements, but because this isn't, you know, the subject of a development application. We don't really get to extract improvements out of them. Um a lot of the zoning that we just talked about in the last hearing applies to this, so it's zoned county R ten, it's surrounded by county R ten. Um but like the last one, the surrounding uh zoning would be R seven for city zoning, so you know. This, this property that we just looked at would be R seven if we annexed it in, we know that this property over here is already R seven. Uh county public works said the same thing to this, they didn't have any comments or concerns. The one funky thing here is that we can't approve this annexation unless the other one goes through its formal approval process. And so there is a condition of approval in there that this other subject property is annexed. Um in order for this one to be contiguous. Uh this site's also on McNulty Water. Um it's already connected to city sewer, we've got capacity, that's not an issue. Um this use on the property would be considered a public facility major, which is a conditionally allowed use in the R seven and R ten uh zoning district. So um it doesn't create a non-conforming use, just creates a conditional use. Conditional use process.
So they have to, after we, they want it R seven, it's already built, it's doing conditional use process.
No, but she, changes to the site would trigger the need to relook at those standards.
Still say.
Yeah, nothing is triggered by annexing it in, yeah. We just always like to know if we're creating non-conforming uses. That way, if they ask to build something on a property, we kind of know what we're working on, what we can't allow.
Or with R seven too.
Yeah, so um we've got R seven or R ten as the same option, I think just given this other zoning, you'd want R seven as well. That's staff's recommendation, and like I mentioned, the one weird thing here is that there is the condition that the other annexation is processed and approved first. If something were to come up in the hearing, they withdraw their application or something crazy. Um we, we wouldn't move forward with the annexation of this property.
No, I understand, you need one to do the other.
Yep, exactly. Um so that, really, that's, that's all I have. You can make a motion for, uh, well, we're not deliberations yet.
So the garage, trying to see where this located, and there's a photo here, it's not built yet. It's on, on the west end of the lot.
Yeah, it's kind of, I actually have some photos of it.
What's in, yeah, you guys see the photos, it's the west end of the lot, so.
It's towards uh Division, Division, yeah, that's the garage, yeah.
The manufactured home of the one just.
Oh yeah, in the background, yeah, it's literally in the same photo, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Open this, can remember the lot.
There too.
Any other questions?
Want a motion?
Got to close the hearing first.
That's why I'm asking you. Or he.
Any other questions? The. Here any? There are no further questions to the commission, no further response to the staff, public records close as bad as we're gonna turn to the table for deliberations and oral discussion. We're gonna discuss this each one of the. So we good? You have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we annex it with an R seven, right?
R seven.
You're doing one today.
Second.
You have a second, uh on favor?
Hi.
Hi.
We have a motion to, can you sign?
We don't have to sign this.
That's right.
Almost Christine, we'd heard. I talked to her.
Okay.
I just, yeah, things over go.
Check, check. Or that's a, many commission term for reasons and weaknesses again.
Yeah, we always get to discuss this in the fall, so we have uh three people to pick on today, uh first of all, let's talk about. Russ and Jennifer. So both of you, and I, I know we asked you informally, um because we were trying to determine if we needed to meet, but we had a joint meeting instead. But this is the formal time, so. Well, Russ and Jennifer's terms come up at the end of the calendar year. Um neither of you have served to full terms, and so um if you wish to continue. It's pretty much automatic.
I don't know, Russ, what do you think?
We're on a tight spot now, don't we?
Yeah.
Well, I guess I, another four years?
Oh, I guess I, another four years? Four, yeah. I'll be so old by then.
Maybe four years goes best.
It goes with, yes, it does. Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll do it. How about you, Jennifer?
I'll do it if you'll do it.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay, so then we would just need a motion from the commission. And so then councillor Berkeley can bring that to. The council at their next meeting for appointments.
So we have a motion, so moved.
Okay.
We keep on both.
These guys? And I guess we are all favor?
Aye.
She'll say no, Justice.
Just don't make it, you know.
Would you?
You guys have got another four years. That's the good news for us.
You're welcome.
Do you, do you have, do you have a, a list of when we?
Yes, we do.
I can pull that up.
You can have it.
I can remember.
Page.
I, I came in a part way up somebody.
You have the list of phone numbers?
Did you take over Vermont's?
Yeah.
Fern's position?
No, it was from somebody who passed away. For a couple of years and then. And I did a few more. It was, it was right when you, right when you came on.
What was it, Steve Sickles?
Yeah.
You know? That does.
I thought someone else took over his.
I don't know who it was.
I remember Steve and I remember him passing.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. There it is.
There's your history if you want to.
So.
Brag about who's been here the longest.
I want a copy of that.
You have one.
Should be sent, should have.
Dan.
It wasn't, thank you.
Two thousand nine.
I know he's been there a while. Two thousand nine, Dan.
Andre, oh three. Sorry, Jennifer, I'm not sharing screens, so you can't see it, but I'm sure you've seen the master list.
That's okay, good.
They're all admiring how long they've been.
Two more years, Audrey.
I know. Twenty-two, isn't it?
That's just good. You should all be aware.
It's twenty-three?
No, yours is twenty-two, Andre.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay, so the other matter we need to discuss in regards to planning commission is Commissioner Kavanaugh. Now, Commissioner Kavanaugh has formally missed four consecutive meetings. Now, whether or not you included the joint meeting, it was on a different day is, is something else. But this would make it consecutive meeting number three. And per the planning commission's rules. Three consecutive meetings without an approved excuse from the planning commission is presumed to be non-conformance of duty. Which is a justification for. Removal from the commission. And. This hasn't happened before, but the, the council is going to have to have a public hearing. To provide an opportunity for any rebuttal. To formally. Vacate that position. But what we need from the planning commission is a motion that no excuse has been granted by the commission for those absences. And we have tried, Christina's tried multiple times via email and phone. I left a message in September saying, you know, if, if you don't want to be on here, that's fine, just let us know. To try to get a, you know, I, I resign or something like that, nothing. So we've got to go through this stuff now. So what we need from you. Is one, a motion to. A motion that no excuse from the commission is granted. And then I, I was hoping this was going to be a year. We didn't have to do this, but unfortunately, we got to talk about interview subcommittees.
Do we, can we just fill a term with someone else?
Well.
And bring Greg back?
And I, I, I thought about that. And the problem is, is the council's commission rules say explicitly says when there is a vacancy. You have to advertise unless it's, you know, within the two-term thing. And someone being removed for reasons like this does constitute a vacancy. And so we would technically have to go through that process. I was thinking, God, you know, we interviewed all these people, why can't we just revisit what we did? But in reading the protocols, yes, son of a gun, we can, so.
Like someone put us away. It's fine.
It's a vacancy.
It's like starting over.
Maybe something will up there too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not, not so far, it's gonna be good.
So the, so then the first thing is, is the motion that no excuse was granted for those absences?
So moved.
Do it second.
Red second.
Or maybe I guess that you don't know that?
Yeah, aye.
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 Um.
We have to vote.
Yeah, it sounded like everybody.
Yeah.
It's not a surprise, it's a formality. But we, we need to say that we, we've gone through it. And then, so this will be your first time. You, you were a little bit involved before because you were a councillor-elect. But you are technically part of that interview committee. You are the leader of the interview committee, the leader, the leader. And so in previous years, we've had two planning commissioners help us interview and make the decision. And this time around, I don't know if we have any volunteers?
We'll do it.
I can do it too.
Yeah, we did a good job. Russ and I will do it.
And we can, Jennifer, we can have three, 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 so fine.
If the scheduling works too, it might, it might be nice to have backup.
So Russ, Audrey and Jennifer.
Yep, the only, excuse me, the only thing I have to say, I'll, I'll be out of town in November. So if it happens in November, I guess I'm not doing it, so just thought of that, so.
We can come to Florida.
Yeah, we have to set up the time zone there.
It's, the thing is, so we'll have to have the, the council hearing and that's going to be next week. And then we have to post it. And so. And then we're getting into mid to late November and next giving. In, in previous, it's always been in December. Probably that's what's going to happen in this case.
I'm happy to help them, so.
Okay, cool, so. And then we'll be in touch more once we get further. And that's it for.
December, we're calling you.
And that's it for item number six.
Have any, talk to the planner about. Trevor's agenda? Have you heard? That's all I have. Want to talk to Scott?
Yeah, these are, they're, you know. Cell Tower and if you eat at Victor Rico's and you like eating outside. Expanded their outside covered area.
I thought that was still a terrace, yeah.
Taproom did a nice job of theirs. I haven't seen Victorio's, but the tap room down.
It's a parlor.
You know, with that parlor. They did a nice job.
Right, I like it.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I saw it on Saturday night at night.
Cool. That's good to hear. I don't always hear positive feedback. I mostly just hear from.
So moved. It looks, it looks very nice.
For the acceptance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second on. On accepting the.
One second.
Sign design. I have to. Okay. The proof's the email, the sign permit.
Oh, yeah, that's the pop place over here. Uh, no, one hundred St. Home Street, the marijuana, the known grow.
Yeah, with the no amount front here.
Pot shops here in town.
We have three now.
Great.
And some of you remember, that was contentious, if you recall.
Yeah.
I think that was a planning commission denial, actually.
Right.
It was.
At that river.
At the city council.
Yeah, that's. I'm sorry, Catherine, what was your question?
So the brick building was. Was that a proposed pot shop? It was a few years, it was in twenty thirteen.
Yeah, it was, and it was denied by the planning commission, it went to the council. And I, I don't remember the planning commission meeting at all because the council one wasn't real. Real, real doozy. You weren't there.
I weren't that one there.
Um, and, and then, and it, and it was appealed at that point, it was appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals too. And then Luba upheld the council's decision. And then once they had that, they could deal with their O L C C stuff and. And they put a lot of money into the appearance of the building, so that's.
Was that not part of the historic district or why did they not come before us to paint the brick?
It is, yes, I thought about that. It is just outside of the riverfront district. And so it's not subject to any of those standards. So someone could have just as easily put in a thrift shop that did not have the same attention to detail in it.
Yeah, I thought they did a great job, but it did turn out nice, but I just was wondering why we didn't hear it about the paint, so.
Yeah, it's because it's just right outside the district.
Also, exterior paint alone doesn't count as an alteration that brings it to the commission. So if they were to just paint it, I don't think it would have.
Well, the code specifically says painting, unpainted masonry and stone is prohibited.
Ah, there's an exception for, okay.
I was gonna say, because I think on my exterior, I have to get approval on the back, just because it's never been painted, I just, you know.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, okay. I was like, well, you also had major renovations.
Yeah.
August, September activity reports.
Yeah, and I always forget to review my reports to remember what was said in there.
I got a question on August one.
I didn't read it.
The Southwest corner. The thirty Pittsburgh intersection. Kind of clean that up. From the way you, you know, the left.
Yeah, yeah, in fact, I talked to the quarter first one officer about it just today. Because the nephew or some relative who, who still helps, because they have. A trucking business for vehicles and purchase seal the stuff out there. It's, it's a kind of a slow process, but she drove by to see if she could spot that person. I want to go out there and circle the property. Because they talked about. Getting rid of vehicles over time. And, you know, it's been busy, so I, I can't, I can only get out there so often, but I do need to go out there to see what kind of progress has been made. And to see if we need to turn up the heat or get our prosecuting attorney, prosecuting attorney involved since. The guy we're working with passed away.
It'd be nice to keep, keep it going along rather than, it seems to grow.
They go by their own families, it's like they're out of it.
Yeah, they do. And both. Now, that piece of property, isn't that the same owner as the, he's going to do the Popeye and the other development now?
A portion of it, Mr. McDonald, who was the applicant for that four lot subdivision. Some of those vehicles do encroach onto a property that he owns adjacent to that one.
Okay, so it's, he doesn't own it all.
He doesn't own the whole thing. So, so it's encroaching into his property and some public rights away in that area too.
Well, you got. A lot of attention. Plus, who's the landlord?
The landlord are people that live in the dowels or something. And when we send a certified letter, they get it. And then we hear, well, we heard from the original owner, and he was never contagious and, and. He, you know, admitted, yeah, it looks bad, we've accumulated a lot, we want to try to get rid of it. And then he allegedly passed away. I, I, you know, when things go on, I'm suspicious of things.
Yeah. Lots of trouble with, you know, landlords that go into the city, you don't have to look at that.
Yes, it's, it's been a frustrating matter for a long time.
Need for your information items?
I have one for one, and then I think. Oh. Yeah, mine's just really quick, so. Jacob and I have been working on our report to council and it's going to be at the next meeting, I think.
Yeah.
And one of the stats I wanted to bring was that in the last nine years, we've averaged one annexation that's been processed per year. But in twenty twenty-one, if we're on track to process nine annexations in one year. So it's just a signal of that need to connect to city utilities to user development goals. Like there's a lot of outward pressure. And on that note, we have three annexations scheduled for December, so there's just, it's just a lot of annexations lately. And I think it's a sign of us growing, so this is something I thought you guys would want to hear.
A lot of that's due to failing subject system, right?
Some of it, but more recently, and you'll see it next time, there's some commercial, commercial annexations.
That's one of your tail departments that's a bit wrong. Or subject systems failing.
Or it's just that age, that age of when they, you know, were built and now are reaching the age of.
We're also going to have. The large undeveloped residential property. Where we're going to face a similar question as we did with this all annexation and then with Emerald Meadows. Kind of similar with Emerald Meadows in that now we have a variety of zonings we can choose from. So that'll be an interesting one.
R two.
We haven't adjourned yet, so we're going to make a motion.
So do you have a motion adjourned?
I know, I know.
I want to make sure that.
No, I was, I was glad to hear some of the comments at the, at the beginning when you were asking about the, the joint. Meeting, I, I'm not sure what I, I'm not sure what I thought, thought about. It was just interesting dynamics going on and I did say to Rachel. Very during one of the pauses that I think she now knows what it's like being a. A kind of a kindergarten teacher trying to herd everybody, herd everybody in together and getting on, on the talk. There was some really interesting dynamics going on there. And I'm not implying that we, council members or commission members are kindergarten. Lot of dynamic that I could see that, you know, Ra- Rachel had, as, as a teacher also have a plan. The students will sometimes cause that plan to shift. It just kind of seemed like Rachel's, who's moving on her plan and, and, you know, coming along. And she's a, she's a great person to have on, on board. But I think what, one thing I heard, and I think Russ, you expressed that kind of directly, and I, I seem to hear. Is that a desire to be not just informed of things that are happening. But also to be more actively involved or if you want to, to be more actively involved in some. Mining recommendations, et cetera. And that is your right, in the municipal code, under section two point zero eight point eight zero. There's like eighteen, bullet list of eighteen things that says that these are your duties. And I know you're not going to take on all eighteen, so I, I certainly would encourage at next meeting or, or meetings. Or that, that each of you, you know, look at this and have some discussion. If there is a particular area that. Something you do want to, to take on. I would certainly support that. I would certainly support uh that. I would support that because I, I do believe that um our government city works better when we're trying to uh be inclusive of all opinions and not just um rubber stamping. So um I, I certainly support, advocate for that. And so if that's something look at and maybe perhaps be on the agenda for your next session to talk about those, those things that you might be, would you be interested in taking up? Courage to, to move ahead with that personally.
Well, months ago, when I met, uh, understood you had some other four information items at the end that you didn't get to speak. I want to make sure you had any of those, you remember what those were. All right.
No, I talked. Uh, you know, there was, and actually, no, Jacob took up. I, I was wondering about uh Commissioner Kavanaugh and moving ahead on, on that and, and those things.
All right. So just be sure now, before we end the meeting, if you have something.
Yeah, okay.
Interfester, whatever, make sure. Would have been one of our.
I think, well, I, I know, I understand that. Yeah, I had some, I think, be, I've, I've wanted to always be sensitive to the fact that you are an independent commission. And um so I haven't been vocal in that. I, I, I think, I, you see that I was interjecting a bit more today, just expressing stuff like that. It's just part of my um, part of my learning curve, my comfort curve, uh, and learning things like that. So I appreciate that. Thank you. We'd be with you.
Return. Bye, Jennifer.
Jennifer, it's adjourned.
Happy Halloween. You know, you're one that comes tomorrow.
What I can do.
I've been having a kick. I've been going down there for Saturday.
Oh, really?
Saturday night at the hospital.